I agree absolutely. Yeah.
I did, yeah.
You guys ready down there? Thank you for coming this evening. At this time, we will have, well, I will call the City Commission meeting to order for September 14th at 6:30 PM. And we will stand and we will have our invocation from Pastor Hall, and we will follow that with the pledge.
Let us pray. Father God, Creator of heaven and earth, tonight we stand for the moment to give praise and thanksgiving for your hand of protection upon us. Lord, for the way that you have ministered to us in this season, when much could have gone wrong, but much went right. We thank you, oh Lord, for the way that you have kept us and provided for us, and even though there is struggle, we know that we can rest in your love, rest in your mercy and grace. Therefore, tonight, oh Lord, as we give thanks for that protection from the storm, we also ask that you would minister to us and through us, as we minister to the city and make the decisions going forward with the budget meeting and so on, this night. May wisdom abound within us, may wisdom come forth from us, and may your glory be revealed as we surrender ourselves and sacrifice ourselves for the sake of our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Palm, may we have roll call, please?
Mayor James.
Here.
Vice Mayor Evans is absent. Commissioner Jameson?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
All right. Thank you. At this time, can I have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it has been properly moved and second, that the agenda be approved as printed. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries three to zero. Next item is approval of minutes for August 22nd and 24th.
Aye. Move to approve the minutes for August 22nd and 24th.
Second.
It has been properly moved and second, that the minutes from August 22nd and 24th be approved. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries three to zero. Item number one is Consider Resolution 2017-0.
Madam Mayor, the first item of business in the budget hearing is to determine the tentative tax rate, and this evening we have a resolution for us as 2017-0, and the tentative tax mileage rate that we need to publish is 5.9972 mils on each dollar of non-exempt appraised value. And I'll go ahead and read this resolution in its entirety, and then, of course, we have discussion on the setting of that tentative mileage rate, which will be necessary in order to fund our budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018. And Madam Mayor, the Resolution 2017-0 is a resolution of the City of High Springs, Florida, determining the amount of and fixing the tentative rate of ad valorem taxation for fiscal year 2017, 2018, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. Be resolved by the City Commission of the City of High Springs, Florida, as follows. Section 1, that the tentative mileage for the fiscal year 2017, 2018, upon all non-exempt taxable property within the corporate limits of said city, is a tentative tax rate of 5.9972 mils on each dollar of non-exempt appraised value, for the purpose of realizing a sum sufficient to fund the budget and meet and defray the necessary operating expenses of the city for the ensuing fiscal year. Section 3, all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict with any of the provisions of this resolution are hereby repealed. Section 4, severability, if any section or portion or section of this resolution proves to be invalid, unlawful, or unconstitutional, it shall not be held to invalidate or impair the validity, force, or effect of any other section or part of this resolution. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage and adoption of this 14th day of September 2017. City of High Springs, Florida, Gloria James' signature for our mayor, and attested by the clerk of the City Commission, the City of High Springs, Florida, Jenny Parham, our city clerk. The appropriate motion is to pass Resolution 2017-0 upon its reading by its entirety.
Thank you. Do we have any comments?
Mayor, you all know me, it's Bob Barnas. He's back. I don't think there's anything I can say tonight that would change the vote. In fact, bringing the mileage to what you've done is good. I want to say that it probably could have been better. I've looked at what the county has done with the assessments of the properties, and my assessment has gone up probably 10%. The good news is, we have Save Our Homes, so it can only go up 3%. So, having said that, I think about all those that don't have Save Our Homes and that type of thing. The City of High Springs, as you all, as your mayor knows and the commissioners know, is growing. We have seen some substantial growth in the last year, and I think it's going to continue. Having said that, as we go forward into the next year, think about that, whoever's going to be up here looking at our next numbers, as we see the revenues that come in from those taxes this year, I think we can do better to the public. I'll bring some items up at the budget part, but it didn't go up, and that's a good thing. So I thank you all for that, but work on it next year.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, I spoke with our finance director, and she indicated that the 5.9972 mils on each dollar of non-exempt appraised value is the rollback rate.
Yes.
So I just wanted to publicly state that.
Commissioner?
No.
Nothing? Okay. In that case?
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 2017-0.
Second.
All right. It's been properly moved and second, let this be approved. Roll call, Ms. Palm?
Mayor James?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Item number two is Consider Ordinance 2017-10.
Madam Mayor, again, I'll read this ordinance in its entirety. Now that we've set the mileage rate at the rollback rate, we will now discuss the passage of ordinance relating to the budget. This is ordinance 2017-10, an ordinance adopting the 2017, 2018 fiscal year budget of the City of High Springs, Florida, providing an effective date, whereas the City of High Springs City Commission shall, under the authority of Section 166.241, Subparagraph 2 of the Florida statutes, and Section 5.04 of the Charter of the City of High Springs, adopt an annual budget for the City of High Springs. And whereas a proposed balanced budget was presented, received, and discussed, and amended, and advertised for these public meetings, and whereas the City Commission has determined the level of taxation for the fiscal year 2017 and 2018, and the necessary expenditures for fiscal year 2017, 2018. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Commission of the City of High Springs as follows. The budget for the City of High Springs, Florida, for the fiscal year October 1, 2017 through September 30, 2018, as attached here to and incorporated herein, is adopted. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect on October 1, 2017, and passage of this ordinance is this 14th day of September 2017. Our second reading and final budget hearing, both to adopt the final mileage rate as well as the final budget, will be on the 25th day of September 2017, and this ordinance was published on, notice of this ordinance was published on September 14 of 2017, and the legal ad, September 21, will be published as a display ad in advance of our actual meeting date, which will be on the 25th day of September of 2017. City of High Springs, Florida, signature for yourself, Madam Mayor Gloria James, attested by Jenny L. Parham, our city clerk, and then, of course, the exhibit to the ordinance is the proposed budget, which establishes both general fund revenues and general fund expenditures, and also all of the other funds that the city encompasses. So all of that set forth in the exhibit. The appropriate motion, Madam Mayor, is to approve ordinance 2017-10 as read by its entirety.
Thank you.
This being.
All right. At this time, do we have any comments from the audience on this ordinance?
Madam Mayor, once again, Bob Barnas, commissioners. I have watched some of the meetings, most of them, of all the budget meetings, and I've watched what's going on for the last several years. Again, I don't think there's anything I can say at this meeting that's going to make you change your mind to the budget. What I want you to understand is I'm going to look at something very closely that has happened with the audits of the City of High Springs over the last four years. For the last two years, you've had James Moore. Before that, you had Powell and Jones, I think it was. I have the last four management letters to the city from those audits. I was around when one of these was written, as a commissioner. I don't know if you all remember, what we did was a thing called a Maximus study. I think we spent $10,000 for it, and it said, in each one of our budget fields, you cover the cost of that department. But what was happening was money was being taken out of water, it was taken out of different accounts, and in fact, this year, we've got 202,000 taken out of waste, 222 out of water, and an additional 61,000 is coming out of water, going to sewer. In that management report, Powell and Jones told the commission to reduce that number, those transfer numbers, to what was realistic numbers. You can pull these, or I can give them to Jenny, and you can read them. He said that in 2013. 2014, they have to look at the prior year recommendations, and in 2014, they once again said, look at those numbers. You told us you would reduce them based on the Maximus study. Those numbers didn't get reduced. We now go to James and Moore taking over. They did not look at the prior year recommendations for those that were done by Powell and Jones. They ignored that recommendation, and to this year, in your budget, you are pulling out those dollars, it's like double taxation. And you all know what I'm talking about. You're taking way too much money out of those funds to cover the general fund. You can take some, and the Maximus study told us that, but you can't take as much as you do. What I'm going to look into over the next month and year is what the requirement is on James Moore coming into this year's management letter that you should be getting in the next couple of months, and I'm going to correspond with them and talk to them about that.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one. Commissioners, any comments?
I have no comments.
No.
I just want to point out that there was a couple of changes from the workshop that are highlighted on the different pages. Just a couple housekeeping numbers, and I want to make sure that I point them out. The first one is on the public works facilities, on page 65, the building improvements in capital outlay. We went from 15,800 to 29,300, and those are for additional replacements of air conditioning, particularly in this building. That money's being moved from page 71. The uniforms, that says 15,000, it's supposed to be 1500. The only other changes is in the Community Redevelopment Agency, the reduction on the salaries of the gentlemen that works for us. It went from 12, excuse me, can't see, 12, 137 to 11, 780, and the difference was put into grants to others. But they're all highlighted on your copy, but those are the, I just wanted to note, those were the changes from the workshops. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
No, I'll just simply say commend the, I'll commend the staff, Mr. Booth, on the ability to, we are growing, but with growth, you also have to understand that you have more people and you have more expenses that goes along with it. You can't have growth and keep the things the same. So I would commend them with the amount of grants that we've gotten, the amount of way we've been able to offset some of the costs on things, the grants. The sewer system, which has always been an issue, we're getting close, folks, to where we'll be self-sustaining. And there was a time when it was put on hold, and it was just heck with it, but we're getting close. And once we do that, then you'll see about $200,000 a year that won't have to go into there, which will stay in the general fund. But that was put on hold for about three years, and so now we're moving to get to that point. And so I think we're doing what needs to be done, rectifying things that weren't done, and I commend the staff for their work. I'll make a motion, we pass this, we pass 2017-10.
Okay. All right. It's been properly moved and second, that ordinance 2017-10 be approved. Ms. Palm?
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones? Yes.
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. First item on unfinished business, discuss and consider options for multi-users on city utilities.
Madam Mayor, this, from the staff's point of view, this has to do with 20 businesses that have more than one storefront. So it's not a major problem. What we are trying to do is be fair with everyone, to be fair with those businesses that have their own separate water meters versus those people who have a master meter and are serving numerous businesses on them. We've looked at it in many ways, and we're certainly not the only city that has this problem, and we recommend something along the line of a master meter, which is simply the water meter, but serving many other businesses. And I think Mr. Jameson has a recommendation, and we're kind of open for anything. We just would like to see them charge the small amount for every business that's on that meter, rather than put a new meter in each one of those businesses.
All right. Mr. Jameson, would you like to?
Yeah, I mean, I'll speak on it, since I've sort of been the driving force behind this, I guess, and if you don't have it, I mean, I'd be happy to give you mine when it's over. The sewer system is something that I've been passionate about since I got onto commission. The burden was placed on a certain amount of individuals, and the decision was made, we're not going forth, and those 1,100 people can bear the burden of this system from now until the end of time, and that's not what it was meant to be. So now, we have a system to where we have the base rate, which is basically for everyone. The consumption does not change, from a standpoint of equity. It seems to me that if I'm a business, I should put something into the system, because the system is citywide. We can argue that it's not a citywide system. I argue that it is, because it was set up with five zones. We've only done three. But it was set up as a five-zone system, as a citywide system. So what I've proposed here, and something, and we're not taking a vote tonight, tonight's just to see whether or not we're even going to extend it, we'll come back. But what I've proposed to think about is basically, there's no change in the water, the water will not change, the uses won't change, the base rate won't change, but what I have suggested is, within the base rate solely on the sewer, is that for each additional user, if I'm in a business and I have two users, and I have one additional, and I go up to five, and I'll hand this out on my copy, if somebody wants to use it, basically 15%, so you're looking at about $7.42 for each additional user, to where they got a stake in the game, to where now if I got a business, I'm not being hammered, so to speak, but every business in every home has a stake in it, and it, you can argue whether you like the system, I would come back and say, that's not the point. The point is, is we have it. And my opinion is, we have it, we need to get to self-sustaining as soon as possible, because then that stops the drain from the general fund to this bit. And so, I simply, what I would propose, because the item on here is not to vote on this, this is on the deal, that I would propose that we come, that something is put on the budget, that we put on the budget to vote on something the next time. This is available, anybody wants a copy of it, they can, but basically, you're looking at about $7.42 for each additional user per month. So if I've got, for example, if I've got four users, you're looking at $22 additional, but each of the individual businesses would only pay $7 more. So at least it's a way to get everybody into the system, everybody's got a stake in the system, and I think that's important for all the other business owners to know that everybody is participating, we're all in this together to do what we can. So that's my take on it. I firmly believe and strongly believe this is something that we need to do, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments here? Anybody in the audience have comments? Bob, she was there. A young lady was standing there.
Oh, come on, man. It's okay, you didn't know I was behind you.
No, she didn't.
My name is Nancy Lenkis. I live at 18976 Northwest 240th Street, High Springs. Mr. Jameson, I think that that does sound fair and equitable. One thing I brought up at one of the other meetings when we had former discussions, is I think in fairness to the landlords, or property owners per se, if Jennifer's group could bill individually the businesses, then it takes the burden off of that person that has a lease arrangement that's already done, and it's equitably distributed, and then, if my business leaves the place where I'm currently at, that property owner isn't burdened with having to go back and try to get that charge off of her bill. So I would encourage separate bills, even though there's not a water account, but a sewer charge account bill, which she said would not be a difficult thing, and then you are getting that equitable share, and it's not a burden that we can't manage as business owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barnas?
First of all, if those businesses, and I think Dean Davis is one, that has four businesses or five businesses in his building, but only has one bathroom, the amount of people using the sewer, or the amount going through the sewer is a constant number, that he gets charged on his bill. So trying to say that we're going to have an additional charge for a business because they are sharing a bathroom, I'm not sure that that works right. I don't, I don't, one, I just don't think the dollar amount we put into the effort to issue a bill, to go through the process of developing this billing system, and then following up, and coming up with a plan to see who's in that business, to send them a separate bill. Do we know, Madam Mayor, how much this, if there's 20 businesses in town, as the city manager said, do we know how much this would raise in a year in the budget?
Let me answer that.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't think, I think that's an irrelevant number. I don't think it matters. I think it matters to the other businesses who have to pay it. I think it's inequity. If you simply go buy the amount of money, Mr. Barnas, then you could argue, it's not worth the headache. I get that. The issue is, every other business in High Springs is paying towards the system. We have houses that are paying for it. So my point of, and not to do, my point is, is everybody needs a stake within the base rate to help pay towards the system. So that's my argument on it, Bob.
And with that rationale, then you should say, everybody on a block, or everybody within the city that pays taxes that's not on the sewer, they should also then pay a sewer fee.
Can't do it, I already tried it.
And I know, we've tried that, and we found it's not right, and I don't think-
It's not right, you can't do it.
Well, you can't do it, and I don't think you can do this either. I think the dollar amount that's raised from this is less than the raise you gave to the city manager. So, I don't think it's a good idea. I just, in not knowing the number, I'd like to know that number. I really would like to know that number.
Probably 1,800 bucks.
Per year?
Yeah.
I'll wait to hear from the finance manager to confirm that, and I'll send their public records request. And then, Madam Mayor, what are we doing about the people that paid money into this? Will there be a consideration made or a refund to them?
We are going to discuss that as well, and see what kind of determination we come up with.
And will that come up as an agenda item under a specific name, as like for, I would make the suggestion that you put it on there as a refund discussion, so people know what it's about, because I would have thought by the agenda item, discuss and consider options for multi-users on city utilities, that should, could have been part of this, have you all wanted to made it that. made it that. But those are my concerns. They paid some money into it. A refund, I think, is something should be considered. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me, but I don't think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Okay. I know we can put it on the agenda for discussion, but I don't know if it will be specifically referred to as a refund, but it will be a discussion. Okay, anyone else? Did you have your hands up at once?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. All right, is that it here? Thank you.
So this will go on, this will go on the next agenda?
It will.
Okay, that's why, that's all this was for, so we're going to pursue the next agenda. Okay.
Next items is citizens' requests and comments. For issues not on the agenda, please state name for the record, and limit comments to five minutes, please.
I'm Betty Shumpert. I live at 22925 Railroad Avenue, High Springs, Florida, and I am one of those sewer persons who've been paying, and a lot of people don't pay. That's not what I'm here for tonight. I'm glad to hear, Mr. Jameson, that you've been on here for a long time, so you can help this problem that we have. I'm in on here on behalf of my daughter, who cannot walk, who lives right behind me, and I've been taking care of two houses. But on August 31st, I think it was, it was just before Labor Day, what's the last holiday, Labor Day? Anyway, I was walking around in her yard, doing ant killing, ant and what happened. And we had just had, that month before, lunch at her house on the first Sunday, with a whole lot of people there. But much to my surprise, as I was walking, this big hole sank was falling in her yard. And I praise God that we didn't get in that sink that day, because it was, it was a surprise to me. But anyway, it was before this holiday, we called the city. Two men, I think it was, came out to look at the hole. And what they said to us, well, you know, we can't do anything about it because it closed Friday, we got holidays, you know, whatever, we'll get back with you. What he said to us was, it was not the city's fault, this hole, because it was an old septic tank. Well, that surprised me because when they put mine in, they fill mine, the septic tank. But the hole is there, and we had tried to cover it, and we kept seeing like fresh water coming in, you know, as if to say, is it really on the sewer system? What is this water all about? So really, they got, came back with to my daughter that Tuesday after we were not, you know, and he's mentioned something to her, and I don't remember the person's name, that this sewer system had been on there about 12 years. Well, we knew that was not true. Because what happened, when she moved in, that was only four years ago, and when she did, I particularly noticed that they had not finished the sewer system. So I said, and I banked on it at that time, before we go further, we need to see something about this sewer system that's not complete. They had a hole in the ground, you know, they had pipes running to the end of the fence and whatever, but they had not finished that sewer system. Although he said to us, it's been that long, well, it hasn't. It's been about four years of that sewer system. So it's our fault. Now, my problem is, I'm up here to try to see what can be done with it, because we know that everybody else has got filled. I have food for that because it filled mine. And he said that's what the hole is. And I just don't know what can be done about it, but that hole is there. We see water in the hole, and it's not fresh, I mean, not stashed water.
Mr. Booth?
Yes, ma'am, we'll certainly, I will certainly look into it. There have been numerous other incidences that with the engineering company that we had back then did not complete a lot of the projects and that. If this really was that case, then we'll go ahead and finish it.
The address is 22988 Northwest 180th Place, High Springs.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
What's the timeframe?
Oh, next week sometime.
First of the week?
Sure. Monday or Tuesday, I'll be out.
We really got concerned, storms, and we put a board on it, hopefully some more water wouldn't get in there.
Sure.
Thank you.
What about refunding her the money that she paid into the system?
Sir, what we need you to do is come up to the mic, identify yourself, and then all questions or any comments need to go through our chair, our mayor. That's how we run the meeting, just so we keep civility in the, in the meeting place. That's, that's the rules, how we, how we run it. Thank you.
My name is Nancy Lenkis. I just want to take a minute, and I wanted to thank our police chief and our fire department and our emergency services for the fabulous job they've done this week and continue to do. I know your staff has worked many, many hours, and I am so impressed. So, thank you.
I want to, I was going to say a similar thing. I had been out the morning early of the day that, after that storm went through, I drove around, saw five police cars all around town, doing their job, keeping an eye on the businesses, keeping an eye on traffic, keeping an eye on me. And, yeah, so they did a good job out there, and thank you, Police Department, for that. I'm going to probably use all my five minutes on this one. Been a contentious issue going on between me and some people in this town about your water.
About the water?
About the city water. I have said, to some extent, it's similar to Flint. I've been watching your water tests for the last five years. I've been communicating with DEP. I've been communicating with Fred Handy. I've been communicating with the new guy, Trigard, and we've been talking about it. Trigard said in the most recent September issue of this, that our water is not like Flint. I agree with him 100 percent, meaning the water source is not like Flint. Flint's water came from a river. Our water comes from the aquifer, and it's very good. Your tests, every one of your tests, except for the time they had a cracked pipe and they found E. coli in a pipe, your water coming out of the aquifer is good. When it gets to the house, the tap, it's not so good. And I'm going to tell you what, it's going to, it's going to take a little while, and if I can ask for a few minutes more, please give it to me. What's happened in High Springs, and it was admitted by the city manager in the March issue of The Observer, that back in 2012, when I was commissioner, the city overchlorinated their water by about five times of what it should have been done. They've said an engineer gave you the wrong information. They said they chlorinated, and then we see in 2016, Fred Handy kind of figured this out. Well, I believe it was four years that you saw all those notices we sent to people, we sent six of them, seeing your TTHMs and your HAA5 byproducts were high, over what they should be. I started researching it then. I started researching Flint then, and what I found out, and I got data, any one of you can ask me for this data. In fact, I've got a meeting coming up with Fred Handy and Trigard. The data shows that once you start disrupting the chlorine, once you start messing with the chlorine, all those pipes, and this comes from Flint as well as other places, all those pipes that were crusted, with a crust in them, were fine before that because the same amount went through. But once you started elevating it, the chlorine and the other products in there ate away the inner lining. And if there was a pipe here that was plastic, a pipe here that was steel, and a pipe here that was lead, it started going into the water. That's what it caused, if you remember, people coming here saying, my water's discolored, my water's not right. That's what was causing it. We overchlorinated, but we didn't tell anybody. I was never told we were overchlorinating, but we found out in March of 2016, when we found out that we had been overchlorinating. You need to look into that. Our water is fine going into the pump. It's what's going through the system. And the water for lead test says you tested at the tap, not at the street where it goes in, at the tap. And we tested, as I understand from DEP, the city tested at the tap, and they tested at the entrance to the house. And the latest readings, you know what? They're good. In fact, I will admit this to you, commissioners and mayor. I told Fred Handy, the water's getting better. I told him a year ago, my water had calcium buildup in the dishwasher, and it's gotten better. But I'm going to also add to this at the end. I just saw the latest numbers. And here's a number, July of this year, a couple months ago, the number for calcium was 70. Now, in all the test places, all of them in High Springs, it's 200 to 220. Something happened again, and I'm going to find out what it is.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. All right. Our first item under new business, consider approval of three-year collective bargaining agreement with North Central Florida Police Benevolent Association.
Yes, ma'am. This agreement that worked out with PBA meets all the requirements of the council. It basically follows the employment manual. The change is that it meets the 5% for four sergeants, which equals the 20%, but they want to break it down a little differently, and they've come up with a pay scheme that shows 2% for the new sergeants, 6% for the sergeant that has been there three years, and then 10% for the sergeant that has been there for five years, and that equals 20%. And we are in May or June going to look at it, a scheme for the entire city, and this certainly fits into it. And this fits into 2% every year. What they will not receive is the 3% bonus that the other employees will receive.
Chief, any comments?
No, ma'am, I don't have any additional comments.
There is one caveat, and that the chief is coming up with requirements for the officers going from one step to another step. That would be educational, and whatever other items that he would put in there. I won't speak for him.
Madam Mayor-
Something that makes it more than just an automatic thing.
Yes, ma'am, educational, continuing education, and incentives to make people, to give people a career path that will be more conducive to future career development.
Right. Staff's recommendation is to approve.
Any comments from anyone? Commissioners?
I'm encouraged with the, with the step plan because that's something we've, we've talked about for several years, and I know Commissioner Weller was on here, and I think that's something we need to go across the board. Somebody comes in, they got five years. It should not be a subjective decision as, well, let's put them at this amount. You have five years, you go to step five. Everybody knows exactly what it is. So I think that's a positive across the, across the city. We've talked about it, and we've asked, you know, to look into it, because what you don't want to do is have it be an objective, subjective type of deal on a department head to say, we're going to do this, and just randomly place them. My opinion, you have steps, five years, you go to step five, and everything is sort of in concrete. So I'm encouraged that this is something, I know Jenny's working on something now, Ms. Parham, to try to get to steps. I think that is beneficial to the city as a whole because it allows us then to basically project out budget-wise, you can actually see where the employees will go within the pay scheme, and you can actually project it out without arbitrarily hiring somebody and then placing them at a number that you think is right. So I'm encouraged by the, by the, by the step plan along with this. This fits in with what we had agreed on from a percentage standpoint, and in essence, it rewards the more experienced one with a little bit more money than the others. So I, it does what we, what we had attempted to do, so I would be in favor of it.
Any other comments?
I'll make a motion. We approve the bargain agreement.
Second.
Okay, it has been properly moved, and second, that the agreement for PBA be approved. All those in favor respond with aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, respond with nay. Motion carries three to zero.
Let me, let me say one more thing as we go into it, and make sure you keep your head shrunk down a little bit, I don't want it to go too large. I say that to, and I say that with all sincerity to the very fact that we're very fortunate, and we have somebody who's leading us, and the fire chief in here, but the police chief is, we're doing things to get the city to a point where it needs to be, from a legitimate standpoint, as far as HR, pay steps, what we're doing within the department. So just my way of saying, with the two people who have talked previously, as far as the professionalism, and therefore we need to treat respectively back at you. So I thank you, sir.
Next item, number two.
Madam Mayor, did we have a vote on the approval of the contract?
Mm-hmm.
I may have, I just missed it, I was reading some other things, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Item number two, consider approval of FY 2018 agreement for local government comprehensive planning service with the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council.
Madam Mayor, I think we'll go back to the, Jenny's telling us we didn't do a vote. She's, she missed it, or I missed it, so both of us-
We did it.
Let's, let's do it again, just so we make double, double sure, just in case.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of the collective bargaining agreement for PBA, respond with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, respond with nay. Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you, Madam-
Now, everybody wake up.
Now we know, now we know. We got it.
All right. Now we'll go to item number two. I don't have to read it again?
No.
Okay.
We've had this agreement with over 10 years. They take care of the needs of the city with the state, and they do a pretty good job of that. They follow, they give us maps. I know we haven't been going to their meetings because their meetings coincide with, with our meetings.
Our meetings.
But they certainly do provide us a service that, that if we, if we weren't getting, we probably needed a full-time planner. So for the amount of money, I think we get certainly enough services out of that.
And I would concur with our manager, the, they are hooked into all the databases that you need, all the maps and all the base-level things that you need to have from an overview standpoint, and they give us that sort of service, I think in conjunction with Ms. McGrath, who gives us ground-level service. Now, we're, we're in good shape from the planning side, as our manager just stated. The appropriate motion is to have the appropriate city officials enter into the agreement with the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council.
Sound moved.
Second, and this is 10 grand, correct?
That is 10 grand.
Just so people understand, it's 10,000 for the year, for the year service.
All right. It has been properly motioned, and second, that the agreement for the local government comprehensive plan be approved. All those in favor respond with aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries three to zero. opposed, nay. So motion carries three to zero. Item number three. Discuss and consider charges to the High Springs Chamber of Commerce for police services during Pioneer Days.
Madam Mayor, this item, if you're asking for this, you can recommend to the CRA that this be paid. The CRA needs to put this on their agenda and finalize it. Certainly, you can push this item with your recommendation to the CRA and say, we're requesting you, CRA, to actually pay this item.
Okay. Do we have any comments on this item from anyone?
I do.
Come on up.
I've been with the chamber now for the past six years, and we have not had a problem about this. And I feel a little bad that this is lingering on as long as it is. We've always made sure that the job that the police department has been doing for us has always been paid right after it's done. And this is the first year that we've had this problem. I don't know if it's because of the fact that we now have a CRA that's dragging his feet about it. But I really wish you would go ahead on and get this taken care of. Because I really feel bad that this year it has not been taken care of. And Pioneer Day was in April, and this has not been taken care of. And I hope that next year we don't have this problem. So would you all please, whatever it is, you can expedite this speedily. Go ahead on and get it done.
Who paid last year?
You all did.
No, no, I'm asking.
Yes. But like I said, for the last six years, I know it's been done through the city. So that I've been with the chamber, it's been done through the city. So-
Rhetorical question.
Pardon me?
Rhetorical question, and I wanted to ask the question.
Yes. It's been done through the city. So this year, why am I having this problem? Please, get it taken care of. Thank you. And thank you, Police Department. And I'm sorry about the problem.
So can we get... No, ma'am. Wait a minute. Come on.
I thought there was somebody behind me. I don't recall the city ever sending an invoice to the chamber for police services.
That's what she just said.
Yeah. I just, I recall there was negotiations or in the application that was made, it was talked about the city providing, when the application was made, the city providing police services. And then that was agreed upon when the application was approved. Why we even got to this point of sending the chamber an invoice is a mystery to me. But I guess I know where that invoice comes from. The second part is if... I think it should be dealt with by the commission here, not the CRA. I go to the thought that the CRA didn't approve this money in the past. I don't know if you can look it up, but find out. It was the city that paid. Didn't pay anything. It was just absorbed by the city. It wasn't the CRA. It was absorbed by the city. Having said that, that's where I would like to see the funds come from, not the CRA. Because the CRA is about development of the downtown. I can't, in my right mind, bring Pioneer Days into the development of downtown. And then finally, tonight, why I say you should bring it back, why I say you should bring it back is not something that should be recommended to go to the city. And I don't think you can do it, because I believe you're the secretary of the chamber. And I think that's somewhat of a conflict. And then we end up with no three votes.
I'm leaving it alone.
So you can't, you got to have three votes. I think you need to let it go. Come back, bring it back, or just let the city manager write it off to the city budget.
Any other comments?
All right. Somebody has to make a suggestion into what you want to do here.
Do you want to say anything? No. I'm just, I'm in the dark. I don't know what this is about at all.
It's basically the CRA, which takes care of those downtown areas, giving out grants and putting up banners. And in doing that, also takes care of events. That's within their charter to do so. And in that charter, the police provide that kind of security to large events. And so the idea is, if that's what the CRA does, then they should pay the overtime to the police.
But this is the first year it's happened?
No, no, we've done this in the past.
Oh, the CRA has paid it in the past? I don't know.
No, it hasn't.
What we used to do is the chamber would come in and fill out an application, especially for... In the past, it used to come to the commission, and then someone from the chamber would attend that meeting and request that the city waive the charges for police. So it was all voted for through the commission. And that's how it used to be. But now, I believe the permits are not always brought to the commission. I think the city manager has approval of it. I think that's why they sent the invoice, because it wasn't approved by the city.
Okay.
What the heck, put it on the next budget? Let's approve this thing like we've done in the past then.
I don't think it was budgeted. I think it just came out of the record.
Right. Right. No, I get that. But I'm saying, put it on the next meeting. If that's the case, then let's just do what we've done. I mean, it doesn't seem that difficult. So just put it on the next meeting when we have a quorum, and just do what we normally do.
Unless you were talking about...
Yeah, if we don't have a quorum.
Yeah.
We'll put it on the next agenda, unless you like what we normally do.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay. Next item. Item number four. Is consider appointment of special magistrate for code enforcement.
Madam Mayor, I'll handle this one, because this is in my bailiwick. We have several individuals and law firms that have applied for the position of the code enforcement hearing officer. And you have before you the resumes of those various folks that have applied. I spoke with the first applicant, and the statute under Chapter 163 actually says you have to have five years of experience with Florida Bar in order to be a hearing officer. The first applicant does not meet that requisite. What gave you the name on that one? That's Maurice McDaniel. He's a local lawyer.
So that takes care of them?
I told him I apologize, because I actually sought him out. And he's a local lawyer, and it would have been very convenient. But we've got to wait four years for him, three and a half years for him to serve in that regard. So the other two applicants meet the requisites of the requirements of the statute. I know both of these lawyers very well. Norm has been a local government lawyer, Norm Fugate, for a number of years. His son is following. And instead, Blake Fugate, they're also city attorneys for several cities. And so they're well-versed and well-familiar with local governmental law. The same goes with Alan Kay. I've known Alan for all my years of practice. Both of these two law firms have the requisite ethical responsibilities and adhere to the highest standards of the practice of law with their ethics. Both applicants have the necessary requisite skills in order to perform the job as a hearing officer on behalf of our code enforcement board. There is not a fee provision in Mr. Fugate's application. There is a fee provision in Mr. Kay's application. He's recommending $1,000 retainer. I believe it's on a monthly basis. And then he would be paid fixed-price $1,000 per month, based on anticipated five project hours for hearings and preparation of necessary orders, and additional services rendered at $200 per hour. My suggestion, Madam Mayor, would be that we pick both of these two firms that have applied, and let our manager and our office work out the contracts. The contracts will be the same for both lawyers. My suggestion would be it is on an hourly basis, and we cap the hours in much the same as we have done for other services, so that we're not going to have be hit in one month with a large bill. So it would be, once you get to this point, then you're not going to be doing any further work in a row over to the next month. And these two firms may be busy at first. When we start, there may be some backlog of hearings that they have. But one would think, once we get into it, some months down the road, we may not have any need for services on a monthly basis. And maybe we'll go a couple of months with no code enforcement hearings. My experience with code enforcement is that 90% of the cases will resolve once you send out a letter. Once a code enforcement officer sends a letter, then the yards get cleaned up, mowed, or whatever the problem is, it goes away, just with the attention. It's that 10% of the recalcitrance that just, for whatever reason, cannot be resolved. And those are the cases that go to the hearing. And so my anticipation is we're not going to have a month-in, month-out cases. So my recommendation would be to not do a monthly retainer, but to do it on an hourly basis, have a cap. Let Ed and I work out what the proposal would be. Select both lawyers, law firms, and just rotate them. If on month one, we have a hearing, then it goes to Mr. Kay. Month two, it goes to Mr. Fugate. And we just rotate on a month or on a case-by-case basis. Their job begins when the complaint is to be heard by the code enforcement hearing officer, ends when they render their judgment. And it's on a piecemeal basis. They're engaged with the city, but they begin and end on that basis. And so that would be how I would anticipate we will work this out. So my recommendation, to put all that discussion into a concise motion, would be to select both firms, rotate both firms on a case-by-case basis, and allow for the city manager and the city attorney's office to work out the contract.
Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Do you have any comments on this?
My name's Nancy Linkus. I was a member of the Code Board for years. So this one is one that I'm concerned about, because I think we definitely need some code enforcement. What is the annual budget going to be then? Because you said one gentleman was asking for a monthly retainer. And in looking at the budgeted amount for contract services, there's not a lot in here. What is your anticipated cost going to be on an annual basis for these services? I know you can't, you know, predict how many cases are going to go to the magistrate. But are you going to put people on retainer? You know, that's going to drive up this cost well beyond what's in this budget that you're looking at.
Madam Mayor, I could maybe answer the first part of that question, which is my recommendation would be to not have a retainer-based services. So if you have a code enforcement hearing, I think the manager and I will be able to estimate that the hearing officer will hear one case a month at 10 hours. And if it's $200 an hour or less, we serve as hearing officer for Latchwood County, our law firm does. And frankly, I don't remember what the rate is, but it's very low. And I want to say it's at $150 an hour. So whatever that rate is, is the going rate. And I think that that should apply here. It may be $200 an hour, but as Mr. Kay has in his... But we'll certainly look at that. What is the market rate for hearing officer services? And then we'll negotiate that number with both law firms. Now, with the negotiation, one of the law firms may drop out. You know, that's the second part of this scenario. I hope that's not the case, and I don't anticipate that's the case. But we need to get to that point. So we'll look at the market rate, number one. Number two, enter into the contract. And then we'll cap it at so many hours per month. So that, roughly speaking, I would say $2,000 a month is what we would be looking at initially to clean up some of the backlog of things that we have. Now, once we get a few months out, and I think as citizenry realize that code enforcement has teeth, and they're issuing liens on property and things of that nature, then your letters even have more compliance. But we just got to get the process started.
The other question is, I know that fines can be levied. They used to be levied, you know, for people that'll bring things into compliance. And then will that money go back into that budget for the planning, development, and codes, so that it can replenish? The other issue that, I know we have a new person on board, Bill Whitehead, is that his last name? I'm sorry. Is he going to be our official code enforcement officer? And does he have the support services in that office to do the paperwork and, you know, the tracking that has to be done? Because, you know, building that case, it has to be done in a very clear and concise manner before it ever gets to the magistrate, or else it's not legally defensible. And that's something that, you know, is he going to be able to handle all that? There's no money in this budget for a codes officer, you know, at this point, like we used to have. And so that's another concern. And again, if you drive around our city, there's a lot of areas where we need code enforcement. So is he going to be the responsible party?
Yes.
And does he have the support staff-
He does.
-to be able to do that-
Yes.
...and keep up with it, and his other responsibilities?
He does.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Okay, then.
No, I would agree with the deal. There's no retainer, and you do an hourly type of deal. It'd be similar to the planner that we have now, similar to Diamond, to where we cap the amount in a month, so we know. So I would-
Know exactly what it's going to be.
Hi. My name is Mary Lynch, and I live at two, yeah, whatever it is, 108 Old Ninth Avenue, whatever. Anyway, I just want to thank you for staying on this and not putting it by the wayside. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
So I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager and city attorney to negotiate with the two law firms and bring a contract back for commission approval.
Second.
Okay. It has been properly moved. And second, that the two applications for the magistrate be approved. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, nay.
Quick question, if you would, ma'am. Within the, we will do the negotiations and so forth, to where it will start October 1st? My anticipation is we will be able to start October 1st. Okay. I just-
Okay. Motion carries three to zero. All right. That's the last item. So we're ready for city attorney.
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Nothing to report?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. City manager?
Yes, ma'am. A few comments. Mr. Barnes was correct up to a point. And there is one other item that we put into the water- and copper. We had three homes out of 20 that we tested. We're now taking one of those off the system because the individual wasn't very cooperative. We have tested the water going into those homes, and they, they are pure, so there's a problem within those homes that Aquagold should have solved, and so we're looking into it. It's not something that we've, we are not looking into, because water is extremely important. In this, in the storm we had, of course, we had water all the time, and that really made the difference. Comments I have on Newberry, you know, I appreciate the support of the mayor and Linda going there. In the future, staff will be more forceful on our opinions, even if there is a mayor or city manager or whatever comes here and asks for something, we will give you our opinions more forcefully. Like to talk about the storm just a minute. Staff was ready. I think every employee knew their job and position and what to do. We had the city broken up into thirds. We had contractors ready to come in and take care of their particular areas. The police, fire, and public works had the areas to do the debris and damage assessment. We were really ready. And it's, when you, you work up to that point, it's almost a disappointment, but it was a godsend that we did not get a larger storm. We did have 10 grinder pumps that went out, and we're now trying to replace those. We are pumping a number of grinder pumps that didn't have power, but we're pumping them halfway down, and so that's the only solution, because there was never built in a solution for grinder pumps. So as long as it's a minimum amount, we're okay. And because the power stayed on to a number of the homes, our workload was manageable. We are still having to buy 10 pumps, and that will go against FEMA, because this is a storm-related, and they were flooded out. So other than that, great job. Staff needs to be, have themselves on the back, and we're ready for the next one.
Ready for the next one?
Yes, ma'am.
We don't want one else down soon.
Can I ask a question of you a minute? I have been without a big question since Sunday, I'm still without.
Yes, ma'am.
This morning, it's not going out, so I'm worried about the storm.
And, and you're not alone. I, the young lady next to you, and what I have told her is that.
She's not alone.
Right. I will, you're, are you on Duke or Clay Electric?
Duke.
So you're on Duke. I will get ahold of Duke in the morning and then take them around to those areas that they're not servicing. They almost have the full town up and running, and I do want to make sure that they don't miss anybody.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Ms. Jones?
I too want to commend the emergency services that we have, our first responders. It was scary watching everything going on. It was very stressful. We were very fortunate. We still have some issues with possible flooding, but we came out, most of us came out pretty, pretty good on that. But it's nice to know that we have staff ready to assist us when necessary, and I was very pleased. I'm sorry that Steve Youngham is not here to receive that as well, but if you'll pass that on to him when you see him.
Yes, I certainly will.
It was, it was great.
He is at the emergency management right now at Santa Fe High School, and they're supposed to tear down sometime tonight, because the river has stabilized and will slowly start going down.
Very good.
So you know that subdivision down here is not going to be flooded, do you think?
It will not be flooded.
Oh, great.
Very good. Dan?
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Jones?
Well, I mean, I'll echo. I think the other thing of this, too, is from the public works standpoint, Alatwa has a boiled water.
Right, they do.
We don't have a boiled water, because our water guy was at the plant every hour through the night, making sure that the power, and when the power went off, he put the generator on, and when the gas, the diesel started to go down, Roddy Hopman contacted the state and made sure that a, that a tanker came in and refilled the generator to make sure that it didn't go down. I understand this is an issue, and we talk on the water. I want to make darn sure that my opinion is made on this one to the degree. We've done more in the water system in the three and a half years and so forth than was ever done before. Nothing was done on the water system prior to this. We put a $700,000 grant in and exchanged the water pipes. We recently went in and took the water system. We put in shut-off valves, which weren't there. We have electrical conduit lines serving as water lines that we're going in and doing. I want to make darn sure that when, when we sit there and we start chastising the water, and we start chastising the people, and people are out there doing this, and I want to make darn sure we understand, and I don't get emotional too often. Our water's in as good a shape that it's ever been. People are going to make false claims, and they're going to do it. We check the water every time, and I get the calls from the, from the gentleman. Our water is drinkable. Is it the best it could possibly be? Maybe not. But it's not for lack of effort, and it's not for us sitting there and just basically throwing our hands up and going, oh, jeez, what can we do? We've got a gentleman, Rodney Hopman, who spends every thinking day, hour after hour at night, checking it and doing the testing. We're spot-on. If the water was bad, they would shut down the water, folks, and they wouldn't allow us to drink it. Okay? So I want to make sure that people understand, there's going to be a lot said. More has been done on the water system in the last three and a half years, and it's been done, and I can't tell you how long. There was a time before when there was nothing done on the infrastructure. Nothing, when I was on the commission. It was a pass. Nothing. We've done more, and there's more to be done. There's more to be done with the water system. We're currently trying to get more grants so we can improve the water lines that are still out there. We have some lead pipes, but we're trying to get some water, to money, the grants to do this. So when comments are made, please make sure that you understand and get the facts and actually get it, because we're not great, but we're 10 times better than a lot of cities our same size, and we have people who are working, who are dedicated. And I'm just telling you, Rodney Hopman was at that plant every hour during the storm checking. We didn't go on a boiled water, because we made darn sure, Mr. Booth and our staff made darn sure that the electrical stayed on, and the generator stayed on, and the plant stayed, stayed active. We've tried multiple solutions to, to make sure that the quality of water is secure. We've, we've gone everything. If you, if you go and you talk to the experts, the experts will tell you that we've done everything possible that can be done. So I'll be quiet, I guess. But this, this, this is, this is a passionate topic, and I just want to make darn sure that when people talk about it, we actually have the facts, we understand what's going on, and speak to, speak to the water department on, on the deal. So I thank you, and I appreciate the, my main man over here and the, and the police, and I understand what you guys did, and you guys know my affection for you guys and for the fire department. But I want to make sure the other part, the public works guys, the sewer guys that were out, those, the non-sexy type of employees that aren't there, that work behind the scenes, that go in and when the line breaks, get down in the hole?
Yes.
In the water and, and do it. Nobody sees that. Nobody talks about the guys getting in there 2:00 in the morning and going down into a hole when the water's flowing, because we don't have any shut-off valves. Well, they put shut-off valves in on the last one, so we can do this. So a lot is being done, folks. A lot is being done, and a lot more still has to be done. But let's make darn sure we, we make sure that we give credit to those people and the success that we've had, because there was a time not long ago when we did nothing on infrastructure. Nothing. Thank you.
Well, you know, I would like to say thank you as well, because you guys were right on the ball. And any other time when there's something going on, you guys are always there. And it's too bad that Rodney is not here tonight to hear his thank you, but when I see him, I will tell him, so he will know. But I'm, we all are really blessed that things went as lightly as they did, because they could have been much, much worse. So we all owe an extra prayer for that. But again, to all of you that were out there, I thank you.
Okay. Well said, Mayor.
Everything's said. All right, then.
That's adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.